Not ours. Not a home game.
We're ready to go.
Although they, I heard they were selling tickets for the venue for $10 apiece for people to go and, and watch it on big screen.
All right, everybody, I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a meeting. A regular session of the mayor and council of the city of Bisbee County of Cochise, state of Arizona, being held on Tuesday, July 20th, 2021, starting at 7:01 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lewis Pollak.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacamino.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns is excused. Mayor Pro Tim Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff, Stephen Pocken, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Jesus Haro, public works director, Albert Chavat, police chief, Joe Estes, city attorney. George Castillo, fire chief. Sorry, didn't realize you joined.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight, whether on Facebook or on Zoom. Tonight, for the invocation, I just want us to take a moment. Kind of tragic news came out of Tucson for some of our first responders. It's, it's pretty devastating when, when people start to shoot our first responders. And there was two EMTs from a private ambulance service and, of course, the fire captain. And one of the bystanders was killed. And so I just want us to remember that first responders were there. And that's just something we, we can't tolerate. And it's a real tragedy. So give a couple of minutes for their families and, and for them. Thank you. All right. Thank you, everybody. There's a. I don't really have any proclamations or, or real announcements. We will be announcing a special session. If not this week, next week, to deal with our money we got from the federal government. So we'll keep your prizes of that. And, and we entertain, I wish you all would join in and, and watch and see what, how, how that proceeds. It's something I've never done before. And I think it will be a kind of a, a fun thing of actually figure out how to spend money instead of save money. So. Watch for that coming out in the next, next little while.
Mayor, if I could, if, if y'all have any suggestions, you got the guidelines or at least the summary of the guidelines? If you have any suggestions, please let me know.
Right. And reach out to your council people if you all have any suggestions to, for them to bring here. Because the more we have to, to choose from, the better off we'll be about making those decisions. Alrighty, call the public. What do we have? Anything?
We have nothing. Nobody signed up.
Nobody signed up and no letters to read.
Nope.
Well, this will be a fast night tonight. No. All right. Thank you, everybody. Then we'll just go forward with general business. So first order, of course, is accounts payable.
Payable in the amount of $312,078.66. Ability of funds.
A second, Dad. Do we have anybody with questions? Raise your hand. Okay, Joni, go ahead.
Page four. We're down about eight lines and there's a $1,000 water bill. Um, why?
Is that $1,700?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's the Vista.
Yes. That, that's construction. That's the, it's our end of the year paving. We were also watering quite a bit, trying to get Vista Park ready for 4th of July. So it's, it was, it was a, a lot of water, but yes, that is where we get our water for that.
Okay, just curious.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Anyone? All right, we have a motion by Anna, a second by myself, to accept accounts payable in amount of $312,078.66. I have a vote, please.
Councilmember Pollak. Councilmember Giacamino. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We have a consent agenda with two items. An appointment to the Airport Advisory Commission and a approval of a liquor license for the Speedway at, on Highway 92. Does anyone have any desire to pull one of these two? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items A and B.
My second.
All right. Thank you. A motion by Anna, second by Frank, to approve the consent agenda as published item A and B. Have a vote, please.
Councilmember Pollak. Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes five zero or six zero, five zero unanimously. All right, on to new business. This will be item number three. So we, this will be the public presentation about the library building condition assessment. So it was quite a, quite well done. I took me a few minutes to read it and have a few questions, but I'd love to hear from, from Jason and, and of course, our contractor. So go ahead, Jason. I'll let you go from there.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to you all. So I'm here tonight to introduce Corky Poster. And he's a poster Murto, Murto McDonald. It's the architecture firm that we selected for the library's building condition assessment. Again, that was made possible partly through a grant from the State Historic Preservation Office and from some capital improvement funds from the city. So I met Corky and his team earlier this year for their site visit. And I had the opportunity to give them the grand tour of our establishment. And he's here tonight to give an overview of the project and discuss the completed report. So welcome, Corky. I'm going to hand it over to you.
As Jason said, I'm Corky Poster. I'm an architect and planner and a principal with poster Murto McDonald. I've had the honor of helping you evaluate the Copper Queen Library, a really spectacular building that is a real gem. And we really feel privileged to have been involved in that. I'm going to share my screen. Hope I can do this properly. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, um. So, um. We put together a team of consultants and spent two visits, actually, to the building, looking closely at it. Our overall impression, of course, is that we rarely see buildings of this quality that haven't been ruined over time by lots of changes that were inappropriate to the historic architecture. And so what's, what you all should be proud of, really, and was a major portion of what we did is to really, to really talk about putting back together that is enhancing a building that really is in its original mint condition by and large and something that, that really has the opportunity to get better and have some of the problems solved. So I'm going to walk through a summary that I put together of the more lengthy report. And I'm going to end with some cost elements and in particular, some priority elements for moving forward. So, as I said earlier, we put together quite a detailed report. I'm not going to go through this page by page because you've had a chance to look it over. But this is a good example of the image here, except for that circular light and the ductwork. That interior is the way it was when the building was first built. Our report focused on seven different areas, architectural history. With the help of Logan Simpson, really was a wonderful piece of work that, that described in great detail the history of the building. We look at site issues, architectural and accessibility issues, structural questions, mechanical and plumbing. That is heating, ventilation, air conditioning and plumbing, electrical, and then some cost estimates. As I said earlier, the architectural history was quite complete and quite compelling. There's an image from 1908, when, when the building was, was first built, showing the various uses on Main Street. I love this old postcard. It shows the, the actual foundation of the building while it's being built. It's obviously a photograph, hand colored, that showed the foundation beginning to come out of the ground in the middle left of your image. And when I say the building is largely the way it is, this is a view when the building was built, 1917 photograph. And that image is, is very similar today. And so it hasn't been messed with in the colloquial language. It's really in excellent condition. It's had its ups and downs, as you might guess. It sits at the bottom of that canyon. And from time to time, the water comes down through in some large quantities. But the finished floor level, as you can see here, is relatively protected from that flooding. And I'll talk a bit about that in a second. This shows the 100-year floodplain in blue, the 500-year floodplain and that odd-shaped lot to the right of the top right of the 500 is the, is the site. And so you can see that, that although the water comes down, there is some elevation to that. And, and, and I think we're in relatively good shape. Obviously, the 500-year flood is, is a little more severe, but I think that's an issue. The, um. The south face of the building is not great. There have been lots of changes to the electrical system and the gas system. And all of that has been left there in a way. So the, the most difficult part of the building is that alley elevation. And it's mostly needs to be cleaned up. It's not a big expensive thing to do. We took a look at accessibility. The post office on the first level has a ramp and a, an automatic door and an elevator. There are accessibility issues on the second and third floor, particularly the second floor where the access to the veranda, both at the entry on your right and from the library itself on your left is, is, is got some, some inches to solve in order to get people in a wheelchair, for example, out and be able to use the veranda. The walls of the building are generally good, except for some damage and some wear and tear on that south elevation. It's an elevation that was, in a way, never intended to see the, to be the pretty side of the building. And it's taken, it's taken some wear and tear over the years, not difficult to repair, however. The windows are mostly in amazing shape. We recently did, and I'll show some images later, the rehabilitation of Old Main on the U of A campus. And that building is a little bit older than this. But you can see when you have windows protected by a veranda, those windows are in virtually the same shape they were in when the building was built. And so, except for the south elevation, windows are really in excellent shape and don't really need a lot of work. Door is the same. It's pretty amazing to go to that building and see the original handcrafted doors throughout. And by and large, they're, they're in excellent shape. The bathrooms are by and large in decent shape. The two bathrooms on the second floor are ADA accessible. The third floor is not accessible. And so that might need to be worked on. The floors are in, they look a little bit rough, but in our experience, they are prime for a grinding that would really bring them back to beautiful condition. Based on what I could see, they have not been sanded to a great extent. And so the tongue and groove is intact. And those floors could be easily and successfully refinished. The ceilings are. The ceilings are generally in good shape. We've had a lot of surface electrical that's been added, which has really diminished the historic character of some of the ceilings. But again, that's something that can be, can be remedied. The roofing is in, in good condition. This is a recent photograph of the roof. There were some leaks over historically, but right now the roof seems quite tight. I'm going to come back to the HVAC system here in a minute. One big problem with the roof is the downspouts. You can see two examples of something that significant needs, need significant repair. There are two locations. On the left, you can see that downspout is discontinuous. And normally would go right into the channel that sits on the alley side. But instead is, is washing across the bottom, that wall. The second one is a break in that downspout. And it is dangerously close to some, I mean, electrical shut off. So that work probably needs repair immediately. The staircases are quite beautiful, actually. But there has been some wear and tear. You can see on the right, the treads have been worn out completely down to the original wood. Looks like cobwebs in the corners there. But it's not. It's actually a piece of trim in there that is intended to keep dirt from accumulating in that corner. Kind of a cool detail, I think. The railings are too low, and I'll come back to that. They are dangerously low. And I'll talk about railings, both interior and exterior in a bit. Here's an example of the third floor at the top of the stairs. You can see that the railing is about 30 inches off, off the ground. Current code requires it to be 42 inches. I'm about six feet tall. And if I'm walking and slam against the rail, it's below my center of gravity. And I'm going to flip and I'm going to flip over that edge. And so that's immediate danger. It's also true on the railings themselves and also the hand railings throughout the building. There is on the veranda, some, some cracking of the concrete, causing water to penetrate through that slab come out underneath there, both, on both levels. And then the railing, and I'm sure you all know about this, the railing on the veranda itself is dangerous. There shouldn't be people out there right now. It's dangerous for two reasons. Number one, it's also too low. It's about 29 or 30 inches off the slab, number one. And number two, the code requires that a four-inch ball shall not pass. So you should not be able to get a four-inch ball through that railing. And you can get several children through that railing right now. And so that's a dangerous situation as well. We talked for a bit with Jason about the, the solution to that low railing. And it's really not quite what you think. The historic railing, those three pipes, really is an essential characteristic of the building. And we would like not to mess with that. We had exactly the same problem at Old Main. We had a 29-inch wooden railing. And what we did, and it was something that we got very strong preservation support from the State Historic Preservation Office, is we put a code compliant railing inside the historic railing and did our best to make that essentially invisible. There are times and locations when you look at Old Main that you can't see the railing at all. Sometimes it's a little more obvious. But what this does is it tells someone up there that, oh, I see. The pipes are, in the case of the Copper Queen Library, the pipes are original. They put up an additional railing to keep people safe. And people can understand the difference between the two. So we would recommend not this identical solution, but something in the same family, same concept, where we would get some very, very light steel railing inside the pillars of the building. The HVAC system is a very serious problem. It is evaporatively cooled, which in general is not a great solution. But for libraries, it's the worst solution. You've got books with paper pages and increasing the humidity in that space during the course of, of early summer and a monsoon summer is just really difficult for the book collection, for the librarians, and, and, and really needs to be replaced. When this evap cooling system was put in, air conditioning systems were relatively inefficient and difficult to manage. That's not true anymore. We have highly efficient air conditioning systems. And so we would strongly recommend replacement of this evap cooling system with contemporary, essentially a contemporary heat pump system for the building. The electrical as well, we talked earlier about some of the archaeological electricity, electrical fixtures on the south face of the building. But there also have been modern lighting fixtures, fluorescent lighting fixtures added hung from that ceiling, which really detracts from the appearance of the ceiling, from the functionality of the library. And we would strongly recommend that those come out and we wind up with LED lighting that is uplighting, that lights the ceiling, that then allows the ceiling to be the illumination that lights the rest of the building. This is really 1960s and 1970s lighting, and we have come a long way since then. There's an entirely different subject and I don't quite know how to deal with it. When we were working with Jason and his great cooperation in this effort, we realized that the, but the post office is a whole different ballgame. Post office, unlike the library, has been ruined over time. There's almost nothing left of the historic interior of that. And it's also in very poor condition. You can see the lay-in ceiling is hanging out. There's wiring exposed. But the post office is your tenant. It reduces income for, for Bisbee. And as your tenant, you have little control over what they do inside. And similarly, you're likely not to want to spend a lot of Bisbee public money on making improvements. So in our report, we gave you kind of a standalone cost for improvements to the library, to the post office. And kind of left it to you how you might deal with that in the future. We put together a detailed cost estimate, most of which came from the consultants that we had. So the mechanical and plumbing comes from our, from Casey Mechanical. The electrical comes from Highlight Electrical. The structural questions come from Barnard Griffithson White. And so we put that together. I've kind of spliced these two pages together so you can read them. The total cost is $1.1 million, but that includes contingency, soft costs and escalation. And as you know, the, the costs have gone a little bit crazy in the last six months. Folks I talked to in the construction industry feel like those numbers are going to come down. They might come down slowly. But I don't think it's particularly helpful for you to see the cost organized in this way. So I put that together into a different way of looking at it. The number is the same at the bottom. But I put this together in terms of priority. And the first two priority items are significantly, significant safety items that should be done immediately. Item three is, is you're in violation of federal law and with the Americans Disability Act. There are some minor roofing and downspout improvements. And then we get into some of the heavier costs in a new HVAC system for lacquer and electrical and lighting. And then after that, the, the next big number is all of the other potential improvements inside of the library. And then I pulled out as a separate number, what the post office improvements might cost. I should point out that there are no ADA accessible bathrooms in the post office at all. They're barely accessible for ambulatory folks. And again, that's a violation of federal law. And so if we go down the list, really ideally, you would go one through six as a way to make the improvements that would have a dramatic impact on the library, seven, if you have money. And then eight, as I talked about earlier, is, is a separate question of how to deal with improvements by someone leasing that property. And that is the last slide that I had. I hope I didn't go through quickly. And I'm certainly available to answer any questions that you might have.
Alrighty. Thank you for that, sir. Questions from council? Or manager? Go ahead.
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Corky, I went through with particular interest on some of the things that we may or may not be able to fund using American Rescue Act funding. And it, and I need to get everything I'm about to say confirmed before I can actually ask council to do it. But because you're here tonight, I have some questions. And then these are all going to tend toward the structural aspect of the building. Starting with HVAC. I am concerned because I know that replacement HVAC units on that roof are going to impose a considerably larger load than the swamp coolers that we currently have. And I also know that, and you stated it in your report, that we have to upgrade the electrical in order to get those AC units properly powered. Are we? Yeah. I looked at the report from the structural engineer. I was, I was a little disappointed because I saw a lot of words like assume and presume. And, and those were specifically with areas of the building that, quote unquote, we cannot see. My question is, should we not be, and, and I'm just going to call it a CAT scan. I, I know there's invasive testing equipment that can be used to determine to a greater degree what the actual structural integrity of that building is. And, and given that we saw a major disaster occur in Florida just a couple of weeks ago, and I see some of the same things happening with this building that were warning signs that we're not heated on that building. I was a little disappointed that we didn't have more to say about the structure of a 111-year-old building.
Um. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I can answer that question, it's a really, it's a good point. But from our perspective, all of the structural issues that were identified in the report are surface issues. There's falling. There are things that really don't affect the general structure of the building. And even though we can't see all of the bones of the building, any problems with those bones would telegraph into the building itself. And so we do a lot of this work. And so there are no settlement cracks. There are no places where the roof is sagging. There are no places where you're seeing telltale, telltale signs of structural problems that you can't see, but that are broadcasting elsewhere. And, and we see that often in buildings. The stuff that you can't see, you can see the hint of, of problems. And we saw none of those hints of problems at all. Also, the uses that you have in the building are not changing. The loads that you're likely to be putting on your structural system are not changing. And so the flip side of it being a 117-year-old building is that it's been serving very well from a structural point of, point of view for 117 years. And there are no signs that we could see that would indicate that, that there's a problem. Again, if joists are not strong enough, the ceiling sags. If floors are not strong enough, the floor sags. If foundations- floors are not strong enough, the floor sags, if foundations are settling, buildings occur in the, you know, cracks occur in the building. And we've seen none of those here. So any examination beyond that would require some destructive investigation that is taking down historic plaster ceilings. And there's no indication that we could see that that's necessary.
Okay, I just want that on the record because I'm not I'm not buying it a hundred percent. But I want it on the record that that could be an issue with a hundred and seventeen year old building. And 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 I would like for the record also indicate that before we replace the HVAC units on the roof, that we need to have that analyzed to make sure the roof can hold the load.
Of course, we would do that. Yes.
Quickly, I have a couple of quick. I I did read in there something about knob and tube. Are are you guaranteeing us that none of that is alive up in the attic? That you was in the report? Do you know that as a fact?
It's not alive, but it should be removed as was recommended.
Okay, so you're you're confident that there's nothing alive because we lost one building because of that, and I don't want to even think about this one. So.
I that's correct. I will double. I will double check with my electrical engineer, but he would have clearly pointed that out if he thought that were the case.
Yeah, well, that's a high one for me, and I I'd appreciate a follow up to know that that he put the the tester to it and found out nothing's flowing through any of that wire. So I just.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I will follow up on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you on that. One last question I have is is on the ADA thing. Because it's an historic building, does it, as in the verandas, as you said, we're against federal law, doesn't it get grandfathered in long as we haven't changed anything? Does it? I just wonder when you that doesn't doesn't count?
The quick, the quick answer is no. If someone, if you have an event on the veranda, which I wouldn't recommend at this point, and someone in a wheelchair is unable to participate in that event and makes a phone call to the federal Attorney General's Office in Arizona and files a complaint, you are responsible for that. We do all day, every day, we do ADA modifications to historic buildings. A good example, and again, if you get the chance to go to Old Main, that veranda is has exactly the same situation. And we created ramps at all of the exterior doors that feed onto the veranda so that in the event of a public activity occurring on the veranda, that someone in a wheelchair could get out. You might point out that you they can't get up those steps to the veranda, but there is an elevator that gets them to the second floor. But there is no elevator that gets them to the veranda. So we made all of the main entries on the second floor to get folks in a wheelchair out onto the veranda.
Okay, I just wanted to get that clarified because I'd heard both ways. So the last one was I you didn't make any mention of the steps that lead up into the library. Are those within code and and the handrails? Are they the right height and size?
I did mention that the handrails by law by code need to project past the stair nosing. And if they did, they would project out into the sidewalk. So there's a kind of a difficult problem there. It's at unlike the ADA requirement. That the if since the building use is not changing, there is more leeway in the in the existing conditions. And the decision to make those improvements becomes a a decision by the by this by this be itself.
All right, that's all I have. Do I see any other hands? Any more questions on the assessment? Not seen any. Jason, would you want to have any last words before we move on?
No, I just want to. I want to thank Corky and his team for for coming down and doing this and we we got a lot and you know that this our library, the average age of a library in America is forty years old. And so we we far outdid that. And we're proud of our building, and I I think, you know, if we can put some effort into keeping it up and running, you know, so it's going to last another hundred years. You know, I think that's a great investment for Bisbee. So and and thank you, Corky, for being here.
And and thank you, Jason, for all the cooperation. It was a pleasure to do work on this building, and thanks to the mayor and council for their attention tonight.
Thank you, Courtney. All right, everyone, moving on, this will be item number four. This is discussion and possible approval of renewal of the master subscription and service agreement. I carry. Inform us.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor and council, this is the annual renewal of the agreement with eCivis. This site allows users to research available grants and links, and it gives links to all the detailed grant information and grant applications. And it can also be used to organize and manage grants. And the cost is normally ten thousand seven hundred a year, but the city's been grandfathered into the price that it had back in twenty fifteen when we started the subscription. So right now it's seven ninety six a year plus tax.
It's a pretty good deal now. Questions on our grant software? Say not out entertain a motion?
I approve the eCivis master subscription and service agreement for service through August thirty first, twenty twenty two.
Do I have a second? Okay, I think I heard Frank's voice. Thank you, Anna. Second by Frank to approve. Prove item number four, which is to the to this master subscription service agreement for service to August thirty first, twenty twenty two. Have a roll call, please.
It's member Pollock. Let's member Giacomo. Councilmember Davis. Mayor Pro temp line. Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passes five zero unanimously. Thank you. Item number five. This is discussion and possible approval to sign a memorandum of understanding with the city of Sierra Vista to purchase dumpsters and rollout totes. Mr. Jesus.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you all have already approved an air governmental agreement pro proposal with the city of Sierra Vista for the purchase of the eight hundred rollout and seventy eight dumpsters. The city of Sierra Vista has asked us to change this to a memo memorandum of understanding just to meet their sale requirements. There is no change. All we are do all we're doing is changing the intergovernmental agreement to a new of understanding.
All right, any questions? I have one quick one. Are the trucks in yet?
We have one of them in. The other one is coming this week. You can come down and take a look at it. It is a sight to see.
Well, when we get a dumpster that we can dump with it, then we'll even be better. So I'll I'll actually make a motion on this one to I move to approve the MOU with the city of Sierra Vista to purchase dumpsters and rollout totes.
Second.
Thank you, Lou. We have a motion by myself, a second by Lou to approve the MOU with Sierra Vista for the purchase or the purchase of dumpsters and rollouts. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pollock. Councilmember Giacomo. Councilmember Davis. Mayor Pro temp line. Mayor Budge.
I motion passes five zero unanimous. All right. Off of garbage and on to a discussion and possible approval to enter into an airport contra coronavirus response grant program. Again, Jesus, go ahead.
Yes, so part of the coronavirus coronavirus response grant program is the airports coronavirus response program. We have been awarded a well, we've offered the award of a grant up to thirteen thousand dollars. This can be used for airport maintenance in any kind of debt services that we have incurred during the coronavirus or response to the coronavirus. This is one hundred percent payable. There is no match to this.
That's a first. Usually the feds make us match. Questions, anyone?
Good.
Okay, saying done. Can I have a motion, please?
I moved to the airport coronavirus response program.
All right, heard a motion by Lou and a or two, two yays. I'll give it to Frank. It's the first one. He he's not muted. And to approve to enter into the airports contra coronavirus response grant program. Vote, please.
Member Pollock. Councilmember Giacomo. Councilmember Davis. Mayor Pro temp line. Mayor Budge.
I motion passes five zero unanimous. All these grants are wrong. Sorry, I'm having to zoom down. I'll get to number seven here. All right, item number seven. This is discussion of possible approval of amendment number two to the professional service agreement between the city of Bisbee and Dog Cat Mouse Media LLC for marketing and design services. City manager, Pock.
Thank you, Mayor, and just a testament to what you just did, that thirty thousand dollar grant was a thirty two page contract.
Yeah, it's a lot of rolling.
Yeah, so anyway, I I feel I feel your pain. Okay, thank you. This is amendment number two of the contract that we've been in with Dog Cat Mouse for tourism development services and advertising, which is moving into its third year. As as we discussed during the budget and again, at the last council meeting, and there is an add out now to restore the position of tourism manager, and we expect to be able to hire somebody into that position probably around the first of September. The CEO of Dog Cat Mouse and I had a discussion on this prior to her submission of the contract for this year. And it was made known to her at that time that this was going to be a transitional year with a transitional contract. The original contract calls for a sixty day termination notice. And so what we've been doing is just going with the original contract and every year changing it based on any changes that would be made to the contract. And the change, the major change, of course, for this year is the contract price goes from thirty five thousand dollars a year to thirty eight thousand dollars a year. So so that's that's the big difference. Jen is aware that at the point which I feel comfortable that the new tourism manager is up to speed and capable of knowing where everything is that he or she will have to do in the course of the year for tourism promotion and for advertising. It will be at that point that we will give her thirty day notice of termination. I I will say this. I was here when we entered into this agreement with Jen Luria and her partners. And I I can say that we have gotten good service under this agreement. I and many of you share in in the feeling that we would like to have our tourism promotion and contracts handled more locally. And and you know, Jen is aware of that. You know, as you know, she did move out of state. She's been able to handle the account, but I think that some of the things that she's going to need to know intuitively and from being in town to know what's going on in the future would might have an impact that might not be quite so positive. So she's aware of that. She's okay with it. Where it's going to be a judgment call when we decide to terminate, and that will be based on our comfort with getting the new tourism manager up to speed. So in light of that, staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Steve. Joni, I see your hand. Go ahead.
I have a few questions. You answered one of them. I mean, it kind of bothers me that none of the people involved in Discover Bisbee even live in town anymore. And you know, I I just feel we've always pushed homegrown employment. You know, is this oh, is this an opportunity that could be open to somebody local that may want to pick it pick it up? I'm just also curious on the demographics of use. You know, you go in the back door of these kind of programs, and they can tell you how many hits you've had, who are your biggest visitors, age groups, your gender, your, I guess, racial profile. I hate to use that term. That's not the good way to put it, but you get the idea what I'm talking about. Where is that data? I mean, I I see this, the sheet here, I see nothing that shows any examples of media listing in print format. Are we still advertising in print? Like with Sunset Magazine, travel, leisure, these type of things. All that I've seen is the the website, which I visited, which trying not to be too despairing, I'm not really that impressed with. It's like a picture show. There are good links and such, but perusing through other towns that are tourist based. There's a lot of other supplementary information. I travel a lot, and when I look at ours, it just seems like it's based around one thing, and that's the party. You know, atmosphere of Bisbee and the galleries. It doesn't seem like there's you know, much that talks about our sustainable tourism potential and such, and maybe that's just me being biased, but again, I'm just kind of a little disappointed that I can't see some of the some of the other forms of advertisement other than the webpage. Because I know before, and I'll shut up real quick in a minute, but I know before with the previous person that used to do this, we had, I mean, I could open up a magazine and I'd see Bisbee, you know, screaming out at us and a lot of different things, and I really haven't come across that when I'm looking at magazines.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Joni, I think you are right on the mark on a few of what the comments you just made. I think that also is part of of the decision-making process that we're making now to make the transition back to a local tourism manager. And and by the way, you know, we are still doing considerable amount of print advertising and we will also be discussing maybe ramping that up a little bit more when we get together, because tourism is a specific area of interest in the American Rescue Plan. And I can't spend any of that money unless I get your okay on it. So it's important to discuss it with you all. You know, having talent right here in town, I mean, I I I hear you. And this is one of the reasons why we're making this transition. So and by the way, if you want to see the web statistics, let me know. I can obtain them for you. I can. We also did all of the Arizona Office of Tourism advertising selections just yesterday. And if you want to see that list, we can provide that to all of you as well.
Thank you. Yeah, you just. Go ahead, Joni.
No, I just said, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Welcome.
Yeah, just a quick comment from myself is, you know, print magazine, of course, is the backbone of a lot of this, but but I'm more of a social media guy, and and I'll be honest, we really need to to keep going that way and and looking in the into doesn't cost much to 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 ramp up under a Facebook ad and 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 put in. doesn't cost much to 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 ramp up onto a Facebook ad and 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 put in, you know, a demographic of who you're trying to reach that to, and that that ad will pop up in that demographic of whatever, you know, group that you're looking for, age, and so on. So I think it's a two-pronged approach and 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 I'm hoping that we find somebody and locally preferably that can handle all those things. But Joni, another comment?
Yeah, there's one quick. Yeah, there was one thing I forgot to ask. So part of this whole, I guess, advertising campaign for tourism. Is our Facebook page included in that? And shouldn't it be? Because wouldn't our Facebook page be a part of our tourism? And shouldn't whoever is dealing with our publicity and putting us out there on the market, shouldn't they also be handling our Facebook so that the algorithm is going to start clicking into that?
Well, our Facebook page isn't a direct link to Discover Bisbee. Those are some of the things that, you know, we we do need to take a look at. And I think that, you know, and and given the shortness of time with which I've had to to deal with this, I I think you can see I, you know, I feel a little like my hands are tied too, because I I need somebody that I can, you know, like the finance director, when I, when I, when I need something, I can walk into her office and and say, can we do this? That's a feature of tourism that we haven't had. And because of that, a lot of those things either go unanswered or undone. And so part of the 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 motive for this transition is to get back to that. And, you know, because you know, Jen at one time was working for us full time, and she did a good job. You know, Alona Spurcannich was with us for many years. And and, you know, you could almost predict what was going to happen in tourism because you knew she could do it, and she was going to going to handle it. So that's that's kind of where I want to go back to, except that alone alone is retired.
Yeah, my my point wasn't that our particular Facebook page, we use that to get information out about the city, but but how somebody uses that social media platform along with Twitter and 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 Instagram and the rest of them. I really want us to I didn't see a lot of it in the in the job description, so I would like that to be a big part of the job to, you know, as we interview people to look to make sure those talents are there because that is a that is where we're going. I mean, it's just this just reality. Anyway, Anna, go ahead.
You know, I I think we were just so spoiled by Alona's professionalism that it's it's going to be hard to read that bar again. But, Mr. Parkin, when did you say we were looking at possibly doing this switch over?
I'm I'm anticipating bringing the new employee on probably in or about the first week of September. I think we're probably going to need the rest of the calendar year, which will put us halfway at the halfway mark for the fiscal year to be able to make a full transition over from Jen to having all of what Jen's doing done here again locally. We provided for the expenditures for both of those positions in the budget, knowing that we were going to have to transition and have some overlap. I I would think three months should be sufficient so that the two individuals can work together to to, you know, transfer the knowledge from one area to the other. So I'd say probably, we're probably looking at transition around the first of twenty twenty two. And and that's just an educated guess on my part.
Okay, and so was there any justification for the increase?
Well, the the justification for the increase was inflation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to item number seven. Somebody would like to?
I move to approve the amendment number two to professional service agreement between the city of Bisbee and Dog Cat Mouse Media LLC for marketing and design services.
I'll second that. We have a motion by Frank. I seconded it to approve the professional service agreement between the city of Bisbee and Dog Cat Mouse Media. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pollak.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacomo.
Nay.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Mayor Pro temp line. Mayor Budge.
Hi. The or nay from Anna, is that right?
Anna was a I.
An I? Okay, I'm sorry, couldn't hear. Passes four one. Thank you. All righty, moving on to item number eight. This will be a discussion of possible approval of an agreement with CenturyLink to provide analog phone service for the city buildings. Ashley, I guess this has got your name on it.
This is just a contract that we're being asked to bring before mayor and council for approval from CenturyLink. It's just renewing our annual service charge with them for thirty-three lines throughout the city. And it's a three-year contract, and it is state contract.
All right. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. I I move to approve the agreement with CenturyLink to provide analog phone services for city buildings.
Second.
I have a motion by myself, second by Anna to approve the agreement with CenturyLink. Have a vote, please.
Councilmember Pollak. Councilmember Giacomo.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Mayor Pro temp line.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Hi. Motion passes unanimous five zero. All right, moving on to item nine. Making headway. Discussion of possible approval of the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-one dash thirteen authorizing the re-recording of a certain quitclaim deed to Eileen Weaver to correct the legal description on, excuse me, property adjacent to forty-eight Wood Canyon. All right. I see this is from today to back from twenty seventeen, but I think Ashley was here, so.
Jenna Flagler reached out to us and let us know that this property that was sold at auction back in twenty sixteen had an incorrect legal description. It actually, I think it overlapped onto a parcel that did not belong to the city to auction. So approval of this notice of intent would help clear up that legal description up and clear up the property issue.
All right, straightforward. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion, I might. From somebody, please.
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash two one dash one three authorizing the re-recording of a certain quitclaim deed to Eileen Weaver to correct the legal description on property adjacent to forty-eight Wood Canyon.
Thank you, Lou. I'll take it. I'll second that. Move forward. So we have a motion by Lou, second by myself. Question about to approve the quitclaim deed at forty-eight Wood Canyon. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pollak.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacomo.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Mayor Pro temp line.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Hi. Motion passes five zero. That takes care of the first part of the of our agenda. We will I've always moved the city manager's report up before we go into executive session, just so that if people don't want to log back in, I would hear that now if we could. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna be a little light on you this time around since I had about twelve items on the last agenda. So anyway, the major thing I have is an update on Main Street from Jesus. Jesus.
Here he is.
There he is.
All right, apologize. So yes, we we have started construction on the curbing. What we're going to do is level that the vertical curb there. That is the low hanging fruit for us. We currently have some backlog or unavailability of asphalt. So this is where we're going to start with on the construction for for that. The report showed that there was no significant there was there was no the the overlay did not cause any significant change in the drainage, but we do intend to mitigate the existing problem that was there. So we we are starting that. We have started that actually today. Know that I spoke with the with the the lesee of the building there, and he he did see the the construction had started. So we we plan on having that done fairly quickly.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Jesus on that?
It's are we still talking trench drain in the twelve inch pipe eventually, once we can get asphalt?
Yes, yes, we are still doing that. The the lack of asphalt is has caused us to move to this one first, and but we we want to start what we can as soon as we can.
Yeah. All righty.
Okay, and the only other thing I have, Mayor, is just so that y'all can see my my background. I'm going to step out of the way and show you what the Fourth of July fireworks look like from Erie Street. And I decided to go and not compete with everybody else, and Erie Street actually looks directly at the borders on top of the number seven stockpile. So we're, I was actually able to stand out there in the middle of the street and take a hundred, take a hundred pictures. So a little bit different view of Independence Day in Bisbee, Arizona. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have for tonight.
All right, thank you. So with that, we have agenda item number eleven, and this is a possible approval of a motion to go into executive session to handle three separate matters. I'll make that motion that we now retire and go in to executive session to consider the three agenda items. Have a second?
A second.
All right, I have a motion a second to go into executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Chair determines the ayes have it. We will be going into executive session. We'll see everybody there, and we come back out for the public. Thank you.
We'll put the mayor in the middle.
Okay, we're ready.
All right. I'm going to make a motion to come out of executive session. Have a second. A motion a second to come out of executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Chair determines the ayes have it. We are out of the executive session. With that, we'll have one last agenda item. This is agenda item number twelve. This is discussion of possible approval of a project agreement and engagement with Revolutionary HR Consulting. Ms. Landers.
Executive session.
Oh.
With that, you'll have one last agenda item, agreement and engagement with Revolutionary HR Consulting.
I'm getting some feedback here somehow.
Ms. Landers.
Hold on just a second, please. I don't know what that is.
Somebody needs to mute themselves.
I truly dislike Zoom.
Okay.
Online.
I think it's okay right now.
Go ahead. Ms. Landers.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this evening I have a project agreement and engagement with Revolutionary HR Consulting, and these are for services needed to assist with human resources investigation and matters relating to the city of Bisbee.
All right. You are muted. Okay. All righty, we have that explanation. I will make a motion to approve the project agreement and engagement with Revolutionary HR Consulting. Have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by myself, a second by Anna to approve the project agreement with Revolutionary HR Consulting. Have a vote, please.
Councilmember Pollak.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacomo.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Mayor Pro temp line.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Hi. Motion passes five zero. Seeing no council comments, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I second.
I move that we adjourn.
All righty, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Chairman, it terms the ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for attending, and we'll see you hopefully next week. Get it together. Thanks.
Night.
Hey, Ash, Ashley.
Yeah.
Anything say after six fifteen? I just have a coaches meeting.
Okay, I'll talk with Steve and the mayor in the morning.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks.
Bye-bye.
Bye.